City Council Meeting of September 16th to order. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to say welcome to the scouts who are joining us tonight for a meeting. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law and here in place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes. Special work session meet, budget meeting of August 28th, 2019, the special work session meeting of September 3rd, 2019, and the regular meeting of September 3rd, 2019, approve. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'm going to be abstaining. I wasn't at the August 28th meeting.
I will be abstaining also.
I make a motion to approve the special work sessions of August and September, August 28th and September 3rd, and the regular meeting of September 3rd.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Knopfler. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the bills. Checks 101-275 through 101-354 totaling $914,809.58, approve. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Starley. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. Award, Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education Training Funds Award. Lori.
Good evening, council members and mayor. You have before you tonight the applicant, or the award for the Minnesota Board of Firefighters Training and Education. They provide grant dollars to the city based on training that is attended and takes place here at our fire hall for our firefighters. The amount is based on the actual training that they do, and this is the grant award. I believe the total for this year is $2,688.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to receive that.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Proclamations. Minnesota Manufacturing Week, October 1st, 2019. Mary Zilka.
Whereas manufacturing is a dynamic and robust industry crucial to the health and strength of Minnesota's diverse economy, and whereas manufacturing added $52.7 billion to Minnesota's economy in 2018, representing the second-largest contribution, 14 percent, to the state's gross domestic product by any industry, and whereas workers took home $21.6 billion in wages from Minnesota manufacturing jobs in 2018, the second-largest total payroll among private sector industries, and whereas manufactured exports brought $21 billion into the Minnesota economy 2018, and whereas manufacturing in Minnesota pays an average annual wage of $67,098, which is 15 percent higher than the state's overall average wage, and whereas manufacturing provides 322,000 highly skilled, well-paying jobs and significantly contributes to Minnesota's high standard of living and economic vitality, therefore I, Greg Zilka, Mayor of Little Falls, do hereby proclaim that the week of October 1st through October 7th, 2019, shall be observed as Minnesota Manufacturing Week in the city of Little Falls on this 29th day of August 2019.
Infants Remembered in Silence Remembrance Day, October 15th, 2019. Mary Zilka.
Whereas Infants Remembered in Silence Incorporated and many other nonprofit organizations work with thousands of parents all over Minnesota and across the United States who have experienced the death of a child during pregnancy and through early childhood, and whereas many of these parents live in, deliver in, have a child die, in or bury a child in our community, and whereas Infants Remembered in Silence, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, was founded in 1987 to support parents whose child, children, died from miscarriage, ectopic pregnancy, molar pregnancy, stillbirth, neonatal death, birth defects, sudden unexplained death, sudden infant death syndrome, illness, accidents, and all other types of infants and early childhood death, and whereas bereaved parents around the world remember their children annually on October 15th with the lighting of a candle at 7:00 PM. Some parents will remember their child or children in their homes, while others will attend small gatherings around the state, across the nation, and around the world in unity to unify in tribute to their children, and whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. Now therefore I, Gregory J. Zilka, Mayor of Little Falls, do hereby proclaim October 15, 2019, as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day in Little Falls, signed this day, this 16th day of September, 2019.
Consent agenda. Animal Control Report, August 2019, receive. Application for exempt permit. Little Falls Fire Relief Association Raffle, December 3rd, 2019, approve. Fire Reports, July and August 2019, receive. Heritage Preservation Commission Minutes, September 2019, receive. Housing and Redevelopment Authority Minutes, August 2019, receive. Planning Commission Minutes, August 2019, receive. Police Reports, July and August 2019, receive. Public Works Report, August 2019, receive. Recycling Report, June 2019, receive. Show License, Starry-Eyed Brewing, September 20th and 21st, 2019, approve. Waste Water Treatment Report, August 2019, receive. Water Treatment Report, August 2019, receive. Zoning Administrators Report, September 2019, receive. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public Hearings and Lettings. Public Hearing, Resolution 2019-57, Vacate Alley, Block 27, Thayer's Edition, Teresa Stain, Recommendation of Planning Commission.
Thank you, Council President. This is, to give you an idea where the Block 27 is at, it's on the west side of Fifth Street Northwest. If you recall, two years ago, we did one block on Fifth Street Northwest, and then the following year, in 2018, we did the next block between Fourth and Fifth Avenue Northwest. This is between that Fourth and Fifth Avenue stretch where we recently reconstructed the road and blacktop the stretch. This individual is looking at building a house on the back half of the property and eventually having the east half for single-family homes as well. We did, this is the second public hearing that we're having this evening. We had a public hearing on September 9th at the Planning Commission. The applicant's representative obviously spoke in favor of it, but nobody spoke either in favor or against on this particular item. So this evening, with the council's approval, we would ask for the public input. At the Planning Commission meeting, they did recommend approval of this vacation, but obviously you'll want to get public input before we make that motion.
Is there a possibility we could get a map up to look at it?
Do you have the...
I think while you're working on that, we can go ahead and open our public hearing, give people an opportunity to speak at 7:40. Would anyone like to speak? About this? Would anyone like to speak? Third and final opportunity, if anyone would like to speak.
You got it.
You want me to do it?
We'll close our public hearing and wait for the picture.
Well, Mr. President, if I may, I can tell you, the plot isn't going to look anything like what he's going to pull up on his screen anyway, because it's, it's been, I don't want to say clear-cut, but it's been heavily redacted of trees.
There's, there's quite a bit of trees and underbrush that's been removed out of there. That's correct, yes.
Yes.
My understanding is, in my neighborhood, the blocks all had an alley going down the middle of them, but now in the newer neighborhoods, alleys are kind of not there.
Correct.
They're putting in cul-de-sacs and different, it's a different type of development, so they wouldn't need the alley. The alley's never been there, it's just been woods.
It's, it's a paper alley essentially is what it is. There's no utilities in the area. The owner owns both sides of the alley, both the west half and the east half, and so they are requesting to help facilitate the building that they're looking at building, because there are some wetlands on the far northwest portion of it, as well as scattered throughout the, the block, that they would like to have that valley, that alley vacated.
And there's no alley in the blocks north or south of it?
Correct. So this is the stretch right here, and this is the alley that they're looking at vacating. So this is a paper road, and this is a paper road as well, this is a paper alley.
A paper road, and I just have a question here. Is there a permitted project for this? I mean, there's a lot of work done. I drove by and took a look at it. I mean, is there, is there a plan in place?
Not at this point, there's not. We haven't seen the plan for it. So once they, once they give us a plan for the building, then we can review it for previous coverage and stuff like that. Right now, it's my understanding, they've just been clearing the trees, if you will, not so much grubbing out the stumps or anything like that, but getting the brush and the under, and some of the other trees that are in the way, they've been getting that out, but nothing as far as the land disturbing activities yet.
Is, is that going, is that section there where the woods is at, that one big section? Now, is that going to be plotted up in the four different...
That's where they, that's where they'd like to build their home.
Hi, Mayor Joe Finn. I am, my sister is the one who owns the property, and the two of us are the people who are planning a building there. Our plan currently is, is to build on that back larger one. We've been working with soil and water and working with a designer to design a house so that it would go right around the wetlands in that area. At this point in time, they have, they have gone in and they have taken out all of the popple-type trees, and then there's been some invasive wild, wild plants that have been in there. That soil and water worked with the developer that I'm working with to get rid of all of that, and that is why at this current time, it looks like it's been really scrubbed out, but what they've done is come in and removed a lot of that invasive plant life that's in there.
So there will only be a, a single-family home on this, or what, what are, what is the plan, or, or don't, you know?
I don't think that's dependent on us approving it though, is it?
Correct.
So...
I have a question. When we vacate an alley, do we just give them that, that land then?
Yeah, so the, the left half of the alley would get, the left half would get half of the alley, and the right side would get the other half of the alley. Being that they own both left and right, the entire block, it would go to each parcel. Now, if they choose to give one to the other, then they definitely can, but the way the state statute is, one side gets half, the other side gets the other half.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the vacation of the alley.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Knopfler. Any other questions? So Resolution, call a roll please.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Goschek?
Yes.
Carries.
Letting, motor grader, Zeigler Incorporated.
So, the Street Department, they've been looking at getting a new motor grader. Currently, they have two motor graders in the Street Department, to both plow snow as well as grade the gravel roads in, in town. The one that they are looking at replacing is a 1995 Cat 168 with about 6,900 hours on it. We've started to see some issues in regards to mechanical issues with that particular blade, and so they're looking at replacing that. We did budget $150,000 last year, and we're planning on the remainder of this year. We did get a price from Zeigler Cats out of Baxter in the amount of $280,775 for a 2019 Caterpillar 140 motor grader. This is the one that the Street Department guys picked out in terms of which options they wanted on that, that particular model. So we are recommending approval of that to be charged to the equipment fund. On a side note, I do have stock in the Caterpillar individually, so I just wanted to let you know that as well.
Thank you. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to award and authorize the approval for the motor grader from Zeigler Incorporated.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hold business. Planning Commission Recommendation, Resolution 2019-53, Variance Construct of a 2,400-square-foot Garage Lucas Kincaid Sent Back to the Planning Commission, 8/1919. Greg.
So this is the, the item that was sent back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission reviewed it once again, and as Mr. Kincaid pointed out, he did meet with myself, Ben, just to kind of see what some of the compromises could be, if you will, to, to the, the plan. He was originally planning on a 40-by-80 shed, 3,200 square feet. It was reduced down to 40-by-60 to get down to 2,400 square feet. He was able to bring the impervious coverage. He was looking for a variance for that as well. At, at one point, we've been able to work with him in terms of layout on the site to reduce that, so it's not above our impervious limits. The Planning Commission did recommend on a five-to-one vote to approve the larger size of 2,400 square feet, so we do have that in the, in the packet this evening. You'll note, we do have both approval and denial resolutions in there, so when you make the motion to, to, for one of them, make sure you note which one is for, so that everybody's clear. But we are recommending, based on the Planning Commission and staff, to approve the 2,400-square-foot accessory building.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Knopfler. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. It's still, the steel with, with the reduction of, of the total size of the building, it's still well over what our ordinance predicts, and from the, what I, from what the discussion was before, that this building is really, isn't going to be housing for personal living. It's going to be a business with the city coal, or with the house, or that property being coated as, as residential. Where do we stop when people, you know, what if at some time, somebody wants to build a garage and run a paint booth, or, you know, automobile stuff out of there? I guess it's just, I don't know what can be done as far as rezoning or whatever, but I think we, when we set rules and regulations, I think we need to abide by them.
Mr. President, we've given variants, variances before, obviously, and when there can be findings of fact, that's what our duty is, is my understanding. If there's findings of fact in favor, then I'm comfortable with it. I also understand that there's finding facts for denial also, but the Planning Commission's vote a five-to-one, and I understand what Mr. Hanfler's concern is, but if it was something different than this would come along, we'd have the right to deny it, and so would the, so would the Planning Commission based on the findings of fact, correct?
Correct.
Council President?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if it's, if a conditional use permit is required in this situation, is this type of use permitted in this zone?
And I spoke with Ben, our, our planning and zoning guy, in regards to that as well. So the use of the, the facility or the, of the property doesn't get to a point where a conditional use permit would be required for like a home-based business. It, it's kind of a gray area in there is, in terms of when do you qualify it for a home-based business versus not a home-based business, but in his opinion, it, it didn't get to that level where it would need a conditional use permit at, at this point. I mean, you see a lot with like tree trimmers, or even the automobile folks that are repairing. You do see that in some of the locations around, around town, but that doesn't, doesn't put into the next category for a conditional use permit, at least in his opinion.
Mr. President, if I may, I've driven by there a couple times. I went by again last weekend just to look, but the, the sketch of the property and, and what the plan is here, I, I, I think it, it looks like a good fit for that lot and the location where he's going to put it, and as I've said before, I'm a big fan of garages. I haven't met it, you know, you can't have too much garage.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The people I spoke to that live next to Mr. Kincaid, they're in favor, pretty much. They think the plan that they saw, it, it would fit into their neighborhood, and they have no complaints. It was brought up at the Planning Commission that it's not really a manufacturing business, it's putting his equipment under a roof, which now he has a right to stick it outside, which is more of an eyesore, in my opinion. This way, it's, it's out of sight and out of mind, and, and his equipment is kept in better shape. That's probably why he wants this building. And as stated before, we, we have variances and conditional uses, so that sometimes we take these things into consideration, and we do allow a little bit of juggling here and there. It can't always be cut and dry, otherwise we just ban conditional use permits and variances altogether, never even bring it up for discussion. We'd open up the book and say, this is the way it is, this is the way it's going to be, and there's never a chance of change. So I, I'm looking to vote in favor on this. I wasn't in favor at first, because, you know, the land surface, there wasn't enough for water. It would have created maybe a runoff problem or something, and downsizing it to a little smaller, I think would fit in better in the neighborhood, so I will vote in favor.
I have one more question for you. I'm looking at the drawing here, and it looks like that there's going to be three garage doors on one side of the building and two garage doors on the back of it. Okay, so on the front, it looks like that's where your driveway is going to be, and it's going to be paved, and the back of it butts up to the alley that's in the process of being vacated?
In the first version, it was more so, but in the second one, in speaking with Mr. Kim, and we moved it toward Seventh Street a little bit to try to get it out of the way of existing structures and away from that potential paper alley. It is my intent to ask for a vacation that alley would approve this at a later point. And then there's some weird little things where Mr. Maisag still owns like a sidewalk with the property that I don't think he's actually aware of, so that would give me a little bit more space for maybe a driveway on that backside, or something like that, so that I would still be within the required. And then Mr. Kim and I also spoke about maybe a runoff area if we would exceed that, but it's, it's not into the, there isn't going to be a driveway there, and if there would be, it would be like, what do you call them, impervious pavers or something like that.
Correct.
Which would allow water to...
But I believe the answer to the question is, it backs up to the avenue, not the alley.
If you look, there's a little road to the left where it says alley in the process of being vacated.
Oh, I see that now.
It swings to the left.
Okay, so you're not planning on having a concrete or tar driveway behind it, just in front of it?
I guess I would use what I was allowed to for impervious space, but not like in addition.
Okay.
Mr. President, the issue isn't so much as a variance, it's, it's the degree of what it's over, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, but did you not say last time that you would actually be doing, this isn't just going to be for storage, but you're going to be actually doing some manufacturing within this building?
Probably moving some things around. You know more than anybody that has a table saw in their garage, you know, or what's currently done, and most people drive it. For, to give you an idea, we work out of the shop now about once every two weeks where we bend a few things. That's it. Most of that's done on site. We were...
Resolution, call a roll please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starley?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Carries.
New business, groundskeeper Marcus Roman Golf Course. Ratify and confirm. John.
Thank you, Council President. A couple years ago, we modified our hiring policy for seasonal, temporary seasonal workers at the golf course. It's the time of year where the leaves start falling, and our golf course has thousands of trees on it, and keeping up with the leaves is, is extremely difficult when most of our staff was made up of college or high school age students. So most of those are back to school now, so it's, it's the time of year where Rich can use some more help, and he met with Marcus Roman about hiring, so it's just a formality to get him finalized and approved for the remainder of the season.
What is the wish of the council?
Council President, I move to approve Marcus Roman as a groundskeeper at, to ratify and confirm it at the golf course.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Heritage Preservation Commission Recommendation, Loan/Grant Great Wall Roof Repairs. Lori.
The owner of the Great Wall approached the HPC regarding roof repairs that he needs to his building downtown at 113 First Avenue, or First Street Northeast. The total cost of the project is just shy of $52,000. Through the discussion, the HPC approved financing a portion of the project, or $35,000 of the project. The balance will be going to the EDA for action to see if they would be willing to fund the balance. HPC didn't have enough money to fund the entire project, which is why they decided on the $35,000. So we're requesting approval from the City Council to accept the recommendation of the Heritage Preservation Commission and approve the loan request of $35,000.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Knopfler, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ordinance number 20, granting cable TV franchise, Spectrum Mid-America LLC. Was Charter Communications introduced? John.
Thank you, Council President. This is the introduction for the franchise agreement with, with Charter or Spectrum. This has been a long process to get to this point, to finally do the ordinance for the, for the renewal of the franchise. do the ordinance for the, for the renewal of the franchise. It is a 15-year franchise, and we do have the 5% franchise fee as part of this, as well as a, what's called a peg fee, a public educational government fee of 50 cents per user per month for their cable television services. For clarity, this has been technically expired since May of 2015, so now we're four years plus to get to this renewal point. Not, sadly not an uncommon practice in these, these works, usually with these larger cable companies. But it is something, I think, that does serve this community very well, to have the authority over this franchise agreement with the, with the services that they provide, and also serving us well to, to being able to capture revenues to operate our local government access channel. So it's, it's a win-win for the, for the community and for Charter. There are some changes coming down the pike in, around franchise agreements, so to actually have this wrapped up now is, is important for us, because there may be some, some impacts where companies might be going after that 5% fee and trying to truly justify its cost. I know for us, it is something that we use, we use it entirely, and the peg fees were used for capital improvements like the camera system in this, in this council chamber. So, so we are, we are utilizing it to the best of our ability to provide the service that we're providing. So I recommend approving, introducing the ordinance for, for approval, and then in two, three weeks at our next council meeting that we finalize the ordinance.
What is the wish of the council?
I make a motion to introduce ordinance number 20A, summary publication of ordinance number 20.
Up one line still.
Cross it out again. Ordinance number 20, granting cable TV franchise, Spectrum Mid-America LLC.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Starlee.
Excuse me, it's introduction only tonight, so just the motion to introduce.
Thank you. Ordinance number 20A, summary publication of ordinance number 20, cable TV franchise.
And for those in attendance and watching, for your information, if we have an ordinance and it has more than a certain number of pages, and it's, and we have to publish, mandated to publish a summary publication as well, in this instance, that, that is the case. So we are also introducing the ordinance for the summary.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to introduce.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canopla to introduce, resolution 2019-58, preliminary levy 2020. John?
Thank you, Counsel President. We saw in the work session, the presentation for, for the preliminary levy. I'll quickly go through it for those in the audience and watching. We typically, based on state rules, the state of Minnesota requires that cities produce a preliminary levy by September 30th of every year, so that, and publish the truth in taxation, or, and file for the truth in taxation hearing, which we will do in December at our first council meeting. And then, at that point, once that preliminary levy is set, it cannot go up. It cannot be increased, but for some very, you know, unusual circumstances, I, I'm something that's typically not, not seen. So my practice has been always to recommend that we come in with preliminary levy that we know is, know is going to be high. Unfortunately, then it gets printed in the truth in taxation statements that go, sent out to all the residents, and so they're seeing something that likely will be a high increase. However, we have about two more months of, of operations left prior to doing the, the final budget levy setting. So there's a lot of factors in there that could change between now and then, and a lot of other things that we need time to analyze and prepare for in, in coming up with that final levy. So we do shoot high in this preliminary levy. It's reflected there, and we, we have historically done this. We've had eight, seven, 10% levies that we presented in the, in the past, and, and come down to, I think the highest in my time here has been around a three. We've even been as low as one, one and a half. However, the last couple of years, we've actually been fortunate enough that tax, tax market valuations have come up as, as high as, or even more than what our levy increase has been. So those that have not seen a valuation change, or actually see their taxes from their, from their city side, stay about the same. So with that, I'll, I'll kind of move into what we have presented. In the general fund, key notes really here, high level, we do have about $600,000 total increases in, in, in costs. The biggest portion of that's going to be coming into the salary and wages from our, from our contracts, negotiated contracts. So that's on the books. That was already approved for 2020, and that's, that was going to be a 3% increase. Other, other funds and departments do have some impacts into the, into the preliminary levy, so I do, I do list them and include them, Parks and Recreation being one of the big ones. It was recommended from the Parks Committee to, to put forward a couple large-scale projects, like the splash pad and a band shell, also something that we're looking at with the local option sales tax. So as we have time and analyze the rest of the budget season, we're going to find ways where we're going to incorporate it. Either it's going to be part of the project for local ops sales tax, or it's going to be something that can stand alone, and we'll, we'll find a way to build the budget in for that, for that project at that time. Water and wastewater utilities, actually, they're in there primarily because they're then going to be revenue back into the general fund, and it might be an impact of rates. So for the last few years, we've been actually looking at modifying the, the contributions from those funds back into the general fund, and really that's to offset the costs that we, we have from administration staff that are serving a high function for our utility funds. You know, we, we serve over 3,000 utility accounts every single month. You know, we have, that's, that's a lot of, a lot of staff time that's dedicated to doing that, that aren't being paid out of, directly out of those water and wastewater funds. So we transfer the money out from those funds to cover those costs back in the general. Again, here, that's a little smaller in terms of print, but it's really the breakdown of the general fund. The biggest changes that you'll see there are going to be just, you'll see police being a little bit higher than it was in the 2019 approved budget, but that's in that wage, wage number. Public Works and Streets are going to be the two biggest ones that you'll see. And our standard practice has meant to budget out 100% of those costs in the preliminary levy, and then we reduce that down later, because those, those two departments do a lot of work that gets budgeted, their time gets budgeted out or billed out to different, different funds or different projects. So we have street construction projects like we did with Highway 27, while a lot of our engineering staff time went into that project. So that will actually go into that project fund, and then that'll get paid back from the, from the debt service fund at a later date. So those, those numbers do come down. So it is something that, at this time, we're looking at what we can analyze for the, for the projects, but in order just to give ourselves that buffer, we, we put bill in the full 100%, and then we bring that cost down at a later date. So you'll see, like, historically, our, our numbers end up being a lot lower, and even where we anticipate 2019 to come in is even under, quite a bit under what it was for the budgeted number, because we did have a lot of project costs. A lot of our staff time got billed out this summer for that work. And then down into the street improvement, again, that's the maintenance that we've been, been doing on the streets. So we've been building that up, because we're trying to get to a point where we can, we can have a substantial enough budget to, to maintain our streets on an adequate level each year. Unfortunately, $500,000 might seem like a lot. It's a drop in the bucket to what we, what, the total amount that we, we truly need to, to be maintaining and replacing our streets at a, at a level that they're sustainable. We're just trying to catch up, and we're just, you know, really just hitting the, the worst of the worst areas. And then Parks and Rec, again, back into what you saw in the previous slide, Parks and Rec is, is, a lot of those dollars get transferred from the general fund into that department. It is technically identified as a special revenue fund, but primarily financed out of, out of the general. And then these are the other levies that, that, that are other funds that impact the levy. I'll note, there's one error here. The, the 105 number under EDA is actually 100. That, the 105 number is for the HRAs levy, but that's counted for, it's looked at and counted for separately than the, than the EDA, or than these other, other ones, because when you look at your, your tax statement, that HRA is actually accounted for in the other, other levies. So that's why that's kept separate. And then, if you look at the levy, and I kind of touched on this a little later, you'll see only just a $200,000 difference in the total levy needed to balance the general fund, because we have seen some increases. We actually get an LGA increase for, for next year. That came from the $26 million that was added into the, to the pool for, for LGA for the 2020 year. And we have seen an uptick in our building, in, building permits and plan reviews. That is listed in there as a revenue source, however, that's also listed in there as an expense, because most of those dollars just get budgeted right back out to the, to the cost of the service that they're, they're provided. So you may have seen in the news lately, some communities that were, or a report that came out that was chastising cities for, for charging way too much on, on building permits. Well, it's not the case. I mean, we, we don't, we don't make money on these building permits. We are, we actually are barely paying our costs for, for those contractors, and then the, the staff time and things that we have. So it's something that we are looking at and trying to, to build, build the costs in. We did have a slight increase in it this last year, and so we're trying to analyze and see where that, that came out, and, and planning for that as we move in the future, and, and see an increase. We really, we, this was the first year that we saw just strictly building permits alone cross over to $100,000 in total building permits, and that happened pretty early. We had, with all of the projects that were going on, public and private, we had a significant portion of, of construction work that was going on in our community, which is a great thing, because all that means, means jobs, and means improved values, it means, you know, positive outlook for, for things going on in our community, that these businesses and public agencies are making these huge, huge investments. And then here's the breakdown of the enterprise. We do try to keep these balanced between the, the revenue and expense sides. The, the two big takeaways here, we are, we are retiring some debt service on the water side and the, and the wastewater. And then with the wastewater, we're actually in the, we, we actually were fortunate. The way the project lined up for the, for the wastewater treatment plant renovation, and our work with the Public Facility Authority from the state, we, we got $8 million a grant, just under $8 million total grants for that project. And PFA authorized us to be able to extend the debt service out from a 20-year bond into a 30-year bond. And that means for us is, is hugely important, because it lowered our debt service amount. So now we're into the, the dollar range where we anticipated. When, when I came here four years ago, and we started talking about the funds that we're going to need to pay for these projects, we're actually really close to, to that level for where we're going to need to be. So this does have a $1 base charge increase built into that, that, built into the expectation, but that's really, by the time our old debt's going to be retired off, and the new debt's going to be starting, we should be actually in a really good place, so that our rate increases are going to be very, very tolerable moving forward. I do want to cap, add one caveat, one warning. Because it is extended out into the 30-year lifecycle, and, and PFA really reminded us to take a look at this, and, and we're very conscious of it, we do want to look at building in some capital replacement into this, in increases into our, into our improvement fund for the wastewater treatment plant, because we do have components of this work that don't have 30-year life cycles. They have typically closer to the 20-year lifecycle. And so we want to be capturing that, that, those funds, so that we, we can replace them, so we don't end up in a situation where we have to take out new debt service while we still have existing debt service on, on the work. So it's, it's something that's been, it's being built into the plans that I have, and why I don't talk about these rates staying flat forever. They are going to have to, have to be increased, but at least on the initial debt service that we're seeing and projecting, we should be much closer than we were when we're talking about potentially a, a full 100% or 200% rate increase to the base charge, when we didn't have either grant funds or anticipating a, you know, 24, $25 million plant that we either were going to have to self-finance, or even, even finance at the 20-year level. And then golf course is, I've stated before, it's really hard to, to project, and we have a lot of things up, up in the air and, and working on, on the golf course. So really just trying to set a target, but we do have some potential staffing things that we're, we're looking at, which will ultimately help on the expense side. Here, really, small print, but the key takeaway is, is back into the, what I stated before, just the $15 to $16, not really looking at anything in terms of a rate increase at this time. We'll see as we get closer to the final budgets where we need to be, if there is some, some consumption charges that we need to look at. But right now, the only thing I'm looking at in the base charge is at the sewer level. I did note in the work session, I'll state it here again, I forgot to include into this, into this form, but it is in the regular budget, actually an increase to that safe drinking water charge, the state. That's, that is a, that is a fund that we collect on behalf of the state, and we send that money, all of that money back into the state. So that's a, that's a charge that you see on your utility bill, and that will be actually increasing next year. The state didn't announce that they're going to be increasing that. So here again, like I pointed out, our debt service line did go up from the previous year, not for taking out or increasing the debt service as we planned to before, but we have some old debt that we were hoping to retire early, but unfortunately, our assessment revenues were not collected to do that for this upcoming year, payable year. So we do have to collect one more year of, of levy to, to, to close that one out. And then the general fund balance, I thought was key to note, it is about, just on the revenue side, the levy that's taken out to pay for the general fund is less the revenues that we get and everything else. So LGA, fees for services, transfers in, those are the key components there. So we get almost $4 million of those, 2.7 of which is going to come from taxpayers to pay off the, the balance of the general fund. And then, so you'll see there, what you'll probably see is about an 8.43 with this, approval of this, this levy, the resolutions, you'll see about an 8.43% increase. And then this is, last slide, is just a list of the, the items that, you know, are kind of key components into, into what's making up, making up the difference, so. All right, any questions on that?
I have, have one from an article I saw in the paper about the state over-assessing some utilities. Does that affect the city?
I don't know, Lori, do you?
It could potentially, depending on how the county pays that back, but when the, when the county collects the taxes based on the valuations, a portion is the county, a portion is the city, and a portion is the school district. So when, depending on what they work out as far as paying that back, it could be a reduction in the amount of tax revenue we receive from the county, yes.
But we don't know, they still have to work that out?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. President, just to reiterate what John stated earlier, this is preliminary. I don't want to end it with that 8.4 whatever. This is preliminary, and every other year it's come down significantly.
And Mr. President, if I, whoop. Mr. President, if I may, it was kind of small, John, but I thought I read that right, and that would be after years of trying to hit a moving target, we, we now have a stagnant garbage rate?
Yes. Yes, there's, there's no, yeah, no proposed change in the garbage rate, even on the admin fee side.
Well, in talking trash, let me use static, not stagnant.
What is the wish of the council?
I make a motion that we accept preliminary levy and go forward with that.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gushick, second by Councilmember Starlee. Resolution 2019-58, any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2019-59, Preliminary Housing and Redevelopment Authority Levy 2020. John?
So this is another levy portion that we, we can capture. This is a fixed, there's This is a fixed, there's a maximum rate that we can collect on our total taxable market values, and this funds our Housing Redevelopment Authority. So these are our funds that are used to help in housing projects that we have, the pine grove manor apartments that we manage and operate are part of that. We also fund our rental housing inspections and property maintenance contract services out of that as well. So, something that does have a good use for the city, and we're just trying to capture the maximum amount we have. It's calculated separately from the levy increase in where it comes up, shows up on your truth in taxation statement, so that's why it's not, you didn't see it listed earlier as in that dollar amount.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2019-59.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. John, on here it says 105, but you were saying earlier that it's just 100,000?
No, actually, that was the EDA that's only 100, because the rates are slightly different. The HRA gives you a little bit luxury to collect a little bit more, but that's where the error came in. I had the HRA dollar amount listed under an EDA line, so it truly is, on the presentation that we see on the screen, that is for EDA. For this discussion, for the resolution, it is truly 105 is what we're proposing.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Resolution, call or roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goshick?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2019-60, Preliminary Budget 2020. Adopt, John.
Thank you. These are the amounts, base amounts, again, preliminary numbers of what we're proposing just relative to the levy dollars that we had tonight. I fully anticipate these to change and change dramatically before we do our final levies at the end of the year, but just part of the process to keep included, having the numbers listed.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Knopfela, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Resolution, call or roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goshick?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Public informational meeting, budget and levy, December 2019. Call, Lori.
Yes, state statute requires us to have a public informational meeting to discuss our budget and levy every year. That meeting can be held anytime between November 25th and December 28th. The city typically holds that public hearing at our first meeting in December, which this year would be December 2nd, so we're requesting the council call for that public meeting, December 2nd at 7:30 PM here in the council chambers.
What is the wish of the council?
Oh, excuse me, December 3rd.
No, it is the 2nd. It's in your paper, it says the 3rd, and then it says the 2nd.
Yeah.
It is the 2nd.
The 2nd, okay.
I'll make a motion to call for a public information meeting on December 2nd.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
Well, I did have a question, because in the background it says December 3rd, but in the action it says December 2nd, but it looks like that was a type of error.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Submittal of the Laura Jane Musser Rural Initiative Fund Grant Application, Local Foods, Local Places, and Sprout. Authorized, John.
Thank you, Council President. Back in June, on 24th and 25th, we had a strategic, or a gathering session of people in the community around the area that were brought together from partners from USDA and other federal agencies to bring together these people to talk about ideas that could help to bring food into our community to utilize, to revitalize our downtown. And from that, from that gathering session, we came up with a report that will be released very soon. Final versions are just in final edits, and so unfortunately, I would love to have that report available for you tonight, but it's not finally approved yet. But with that, we have some action ideas that came out of this work, and fortunately for us, there, one of our historical residents, Laura Jane Musser, has a grant application, and it's due in early October, so that's why I couldn't bring the report to you in the time for asking for these funds. But those dollars are actually for communities to utilize to implement programs that come out of planning activities, just like the one that we did around local foods and local places. So the steering committee, along with Sprout and the Five Wings Arts Council, is actually asking for support from the city to apply for this grant. We've already had some discussions about how they're going to help us complete the grant application, lining up who's going to do what and targeting these funds, and I think we have a very strong case to make the request for this. And this is a no-match grant. There isn't a match that's demanded, and if there were, there would be enough sort of support costs from the other partners that are in this, that there wouldn't be outside dollars that would need to be coming from the city to pay for the matching funds from this. So it's really to take the next steps into those action plans and have some resources available to us to do some really important work in getting those from an idea on paper into something that we can actually implement. And I think there's a lot of opportunities that are going to bring some great ideas that are going to help support our community in those around food, and bringing, and really doing that work of revitalizing, helping to revitalize our downtown. So, with that, just would like permission from the council to make that grant request.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to authorize the submittal of the Laura J. Jane Musser Initiative Fund Grant Application.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Liljagren. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Upfront Costs Agreement and Request Reimbursement, National Endowment for the Arts and Five Wings Art Council, Our Town Project Participation. John.
Thank you, Council President. As I spoke earlier in the work session, the Five Wings Arts Council, in partnership with Sprout and support from the city, have received an approval for a National Endowment for the Arts, Our Town Grant of $75,000. And with that, it is funded by federal partners, and we suspect due to some circumstances in the federal government, there's been a lot of delays in that project getting the final letter of approval for the reimbursement requests to be eligible, and that actually just finally came of last week. So, the situation we came in is that we were given information that the grant award was going to be made back in June, and unfortunately, we were hoping to have that letter a lot earlier, and started our planning work and working with some consultants and facilitators in helping us develop the work that we're going to do to support this grant, and so there have been some costs that have been accrued. Fortunately, with the grant letter now being available for Five Wings Arts Council to make the reimbursements requests, we can, those funds are assured that they're going to be able to be paid back. So the ask here is to engage with Five Wings Arts Council to finance some of the costs that they've already had, and right now they have about $22,000 to $23,000 of total costs, so nothing to exceed $25,000, but for the city to kind of front those payments so that those vendors can be paid for the work that they've already done, and that we would then submit the first request back to Five Wings Arts Council so that we could get ourselves paid back. So there's, in the end, no cost to the city for this work. There's, I would say, zero risk in us not getting, receiving those funds back, but really to help keep those vendors whole, so that they're not carrying on a lot of work, a lot of unpaid bills from the cost due delays from the federal government. So just trying to speed up the process and helping them get paid, and also getting this started, because there is a firm deadline that the funds have to be expended by June of 2020. So, you know, the longer we wait for the federal government to get us the letter for reimbursement, the worse off we are, and the shorter time we have to get the work done.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to approve the upfront costs.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. City Council reports on city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees. We have any? On announcement.
Well, Mr. President, I guess, at the Community Services Advisory Board, we are looking at trying to figure out how we can get more people involved with the things that they have available to the residents, and talking with Mr. Mark on the public access is, we might be looking at doing something to, for parents that have kids in sporting events to get to training and stuff, so they could come out to them sporting events and do a recording that can actually go into our public access or even onto the YouTube program for the city of Little Falls. So, I hope we can move forward with that. I'll bring that up at the December 4th meeting and see if we can work with the public access to do that.
Anyone else? On announcement, for your information, there's a Planning Commission Public Hearing on Proposed Expansion to Little Falls Machine, September 25th at 6:30. Anything we need to, it's got your name behind it, Greg, anything else you need to add?
That's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Agenda item for this portion of the regular meeting is consideration of strategy for labor negotiations pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D, Point 03, Subdivision 1. I will now entertain a motion to close the meeting.
Mr. President, I have one thing. We don't intend on taking any action items after this meeting, so from the, when we reopen the meeting after the closed session, we will just adjourn without any action items, so.
Okay.
So I don't want anybody to expect that we're going to come back into session.
Thank you. I thought about that earlier and forgot. So, I'll entertain a motion to do that, and then we'll let everyone leave, and we'll proceed.
Well, make a motion, Mr. President, to go into closed session.
Second that.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you for coming.